May I have your attention, please? Appreciate everybody coming out tonight to answer questions and give objections on our proposed zoning ordinance and our zoning ordinance. We're not going to have a debate tonight. We'll give you information and actually we'll have a question and answer session. Our first, and we can say something else. When the zoning people present the ordinance, if you want to ask a question, you need to raise your hand and I recognize you come up to the podium, state your name, and then ask the question. With that said, I'm going to turn the zoning ordinance planning on the, let's take challenge of the panel.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, can you hear me? Shall I go to the microphone? No, no, please. How's that, Bob? They turned it on or off? Now, Ben. Thank you all for being here. I want to give you some excerpts from the proposed zoning ordinance that tells the purpose of this ordinance. And I'll just take a few moments to read some of the excerpts. But the purpose is to guide development in accordance with existing and future needs to protect, promote, and improve the public health and general welfare, public safety, convenience, order, appearance, and prosperity, to secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers, and to protect scenic areas, to facilitate adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public requirements, to protect property against blight and depreciation, to secure economic, excuse me, to secure economies in governmental expenditures, and conserve the value of lands, of buildings, and structures. These regulations are made with reasonable consideration of the character of each area and its peculiar suitability for potential usage, and with a view to promoting desirable conditions and stability of neighborhoods. And so, as I said, those are excerpts from the ordinance and gives us that purpose. I also took delivery of inviting one of our own, Mr. Joel Bartlett, who is with the Alabama Forestry Commission, and he was with us a few weeks ago telling us about some, get this folks, grants. We know that when we talk about grants, we talk about money that comes to us without Joel having to repay. Come and take just a moment and tell us some of the exciting things that can take place in our city, making it more beautiful, more livable, safer.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. I might not need this because y'all hear me? Okay. Kind of vocal. For the ones who don't know me, and for the ones that do, I'll reintroduce myself. I'm Joel Bartlett, Forestry Specialist for the Alabama Forestry Commission. And I did spend a few minutes here about a month or so ago with the planning committee talking a little bit about what the state of Alabama through the Forestry Commission offers communities, towns such as Hamilton, Winfield, and other surrounding areas. One of our grants that we have right now that you yourself, the people of Hamilton, can take part in is a defensible space grant, which is a grant that pays up to 75% up to the cost of $1,000 to have 30 feet of defensible space cleaned out around your home, meaning that if you have brush, woods, vines, trees within 30 feet of your home, this grant will take care of 75% of that cost, up to $1,000. We also offer grants to communities such as wildfire prevention grants that will put in fire breaks behind communities, subdivisions, also industrial parks. These grants have been available for Marion County and for the state of Alabama right now for two years. Most of our grants come in the form of a match, sometimes 25% up to, for the ones, for the communities, such as this grant for the individuals or for the citizens of Hamilton, all you have to come up with is 25% of the cost, and they will match it with 75%. So it kind of works both ways. But through the state of Alabama, we offer a lot of different opportunities. We can, when we start looking at grants and start looking at development and everything that's going in around towns and all that, we want to provide the public safety. And just like Mr. Tate said in his opening statements, one of it, one of the things he mentioned was fire. And that's what our main primary job is, is fire. And we want to provide a sense of security and a sense of safety for our community and for the citizens of Hamilton. So I presented a small presentation with them about having certain, not exactly zoning ordinance for the town, but suggestions when they're starting to develop these new communities, new industrial parks, such as having 120 feet wide driving spaces for fire trucks and for police cars, ambulances, having proper signage, having adequate water supply to these areas, whether it be an industrial park or a subdivision. So we offer a lot of different areas, a lot of different things for the communities and for the citizens of Alabama. And if you're interested in any of these, please contact me at the Alabama Forestry Commission. I'll be more than happy to come out. Along with our grant that we have right now, it is, we have a free home assessment. I did say free. So I can come out to your home, do a complete home assessment, won't cost you a dime, and we can even get you signed up if you qualify for the grant we have right now, a defensible space grant. I'll be more than happy to sign you up tomorrow or anytime that I come out and look at your property. So I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. Next, I'd like to introduce the planning commission to you. We are nine in number. Three of the nine are, and these are according to regulations, Mr. Franks, Mike David Franks, who is council member and most knowledgeable in the work that we're doing. The vice chairman of our commission is Dale McCreeless, who many of you know. Next to him is Mr. Bill Tyra, retired businessman who, like many of us, came back to Hamilton. Then next to the mayor here is David Hightower, who's a businessman in our community. And then our fire chief, Baron Whitton, who will be addressing many of your questions as they go up tonight. So with that, I say...
Brenda's came in.
Oh, Brenda's right there. Okay, stand up, come on, David. This is Michael Rosen, and she is our assistant secretary. Now, we read the questions.
Will you do it?
Who has a question?
Oh, the time is to be...
Yes, sir. No, no. I'm sorry. That will come in a little later. We're going to take whatever time is necessary for the first portion of our program, but we know many of you have questions about the second subject of the night. But hold off on that. Right at the moment, we're talking about the zoning ordinance. And so we have a statement, a question. Will you come forward?
Yeah, sure. I never did see a plan or anything. What you doing?
Thank you, everybody. Here you go. Hey, there. I never did see a plan. I never did see a plan of the ordinance. I mean, what's going to be under such orders, say, the intersection out here from there down to the end down there? I never did see what plans, so people don't know what to ask, who were, you know, what's going to be in the ordinance and who's going to be out of this ordinance? Where are you going to be faced at, or, you know, can you do it over here, can't do it over here? I never did see any plans, any available to the public.
Can I ask a minute?
So when does this ordinance go into effect?
I remember we voted in.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We need to get it out to the public. We need to get it out to the public before we had this meeting, so if they had any questions, you know, they would be able to answer. Now, we don't know what to ask.
We have a mouth in our meeting room, and we've made up as best we can. Of course, that mouth is not written on stone. If anybody wants to change it, their zoning or anything, all they have to do is ask the planning commission to change it. But as far as it being a safe, correct assessment, it's not. That's the reason the meeting that we wanted to have is to get your suggestions. And we can get suggestions from the next month before we vote. People will look at it, come to City Hall, ask questions, anything you want to do.
Can you get a copy of it?
You're certain you can?
Okay, how much is that copy going to cost?
I don't think it can. It's a dollar a page.
Dollar a page? So if it's twenty page, is it going to be twenty dollars?
Yes.
Will that be put on the internet like the alcohol ordinance?
I think we've asked for it to be done, but I don't know that it's there yet.
The alcohol is, but I don't know about the planning.
Well, I think we can get it on there.
Mike David, aren't those myops posted continuously here at the City Hall? The man was to come in and say they've been here for the last month.
It's in the meeting room. All you have to do is go by there and look at it.
So basically, you can go by the side of the city, come in the City Hall and go with the meeting room.
Yeah.
And it's on there. Okay. That's what matters. When are these going to be set in stone? We can hear from everybody. When you hear from everybody. You want to have another meeting?
Probably not.
Probably not. You're not going to hear it.
Well, I don't think you can call.
Well, yeah, you could, but I'm just saying, you know, probably not.
Or you could put it in writing.
I'm just wondering when it's going to be set in stone, so, you know, so people will know what's going to happen.
Well, when you say you put it in stone, it's not, all of it is not in stone.
In other words, you can change it.
Yes, you come to the planning commission and ask it to be changed.
All right, anything can be changed, though. That's part of the work. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that question. Someone else?
The question I have right now is when does the planning commission meet so that we can meet with you if we have concerns, or do we just make it an individual and express our concerns later?
I can answer that. Our meeting follows the first, the council meeting, immediately following that meeting, which is usually televised, right? And so, all of our meetings are open to the public. And so, I hope I answered your question, Bobby. Dave?
One thing that may help too, I don't know what, I've heard some questions, might go have to move this, might go have to do that. Everything that is here now will be grandfathered in. Nothing will change until that business has been abandoned for, I believe, six months. You know, if you've got a barber shop here, and it's out in a residential area, that'll remain a barber shop from now on as long as that is there. Nobody's going to lose anything until that business is discontinued. It's out for six months, then that can be changed. But, you know, whatever you've got now is going to remain there. You're not going to have to do any moving, redoing.
Thank you, David. I do want to reiterate what he said there, that is, we are a committee that recommends to the City Council. So we have no authority other than to do the light work, assess what our needs are, what our future needs will be, and present to the City Council. And so, I hope that you're not fearful that somebody's going to come and say, you must do this, or you must do that. That's not our purpose at all.
As I travel around the city, throughout the country, I should say, I've seen lots of small towns that are very, very attractive, others are not. I'm afraid that Hamilton falls into that category, not being a really, really good town, but it has so much potential. So my question is, what are you doing to beautify our town?
Well, thank you for that question. One of the things that Mr. Bartlett talked about was beautifying your own surrounding area. We have, I see back there, Kim, who is, belongs to an organization that thinks about the beauty of our city custom. And they do things. They spend money to make our city more beautiful. And so, that's one of the things that is going to be preeminent in our future planning.
I got one more question. Mr. Bart, how many grants are there?
There's a number of grants available. I don't have a specific count.
Three, six, ten?
There's a specific number available, but I don't, I can't give you a specific number right now. But we have enough for anybody that needs it, will come out and look and see if they will apply for it.
Okay. I always did want to mention that, you know, when you talk about...
Someone else? I'm going to call on our fire team to come and make a statement or two about concerns that are germane to his department. And these are things that sometimes we simply don't think about. But, Mr. Ray, will you please come and address some of the issues that concern you and the rest of the community every day?
One of my makeovers is fire protection and having adequate water supply in areas, built on areas, and the type of structure it is, if it's got the sprinkler system in it, if it doesn't have the sprinkler system in it, if we've got some hydrant coves there, hydrants that have to be added, or, all these things go back to planning.
Can you just make that one for me?
Set it better. And I'm saying, water supply is very important to fire protection. All these things go back to planning. You know, having industry and all that stuff is nice, but if you can't protect that asset, it becomes a problem. And that's where the fire department falls in and won't be involved with the planning side of things and making sure that adequate fire protection is provided. Of course, not only water, but the way things build and federal property and that type of thing makes a difference. A lot of things that people don't really think about, when you talk about fire protection, all these fire coves don't care, that up water, put a lot of these buildings out.
Right now, there is twelve, you have to propose zoning districts, five of those for residential districts, and then seven for business manufacturing.
Is this for the whole city limits? Yes, it is. All the area inside the city? He takes in all of what now encompasses the city. I might say this, that, and Mike David alluded to this earlier, that there are always opportunities for more specificity about your situation. Some people have a unique situation, and there is a provision for redress for any issue that you might have. So keep in mind that, as I said earlier, we are not trying to do anything of advantage to enhance the value and the livability of all of our citizenry in this beautiful town of Hamilton. I want to see it more beautiful, don't you? Another question.
Can I ask questions?
Well, come here, Bobby.
All right. Even if I was wanting to come, wouldn't it, but I wasn't ready. Oh, you don't want to be. I'd just like to ask, is this thing, you know, is adopted all over town, who will be in charge of enforcing it on a day-to-day basis, or month-to-month, or however that's going to be handled?
Well, you need to, can you give me more specific information?
Well, if I sat and built a chicken house over outside Mayor's house and all like that, I mean, who would be in charge of telling me not to do it?
I'm clearly the mayor.
How's it going to be enforced? You'll have to think about that, I mean, you know. I don't know, I think.
On the building code, before a permit would be issued, it would be coordinated before they, it would be the first thing that gets...
It should come out of the fire department.
Sir?
It should come out of the fire department. Have a man in there.
So if I lived in a subdivision, or just out where I live, or somewhere, if I wanted to build an extra building or something, I mean, would I have to come down here? Would somebody make way and decide if that's suitable for that area? I mean, that's what people's going to be asked to have to.
What David said, all that will fall back to getting that building permit and go process that together. You get a building permit, you see, you'll look and see how that area is owned, and what you're going to build, what you're using for. If it don't meet it, you have to go with the planning commission to get that changed.
Rezone.
Rezone that area.
Or there's what they call the variance of what, which, they have a unique situation, then you come and say, well, here's why I think we should have this variance or another word might be, et cetera. But I can't emphasize enough, folks, that we want input from you, we want to hear from you. We're not trying to force anything upon you, that will be to your detriment.
Okay, what about in some of these, like in the downtown area where it has some houses, you know, they've been cleaned up and took away, no one's lived in for, say, five or 10 years, or a month, or, how's that going to be handled?
That's going to be handled on a different order. We've got an ordinance already flat, and we're working on cleaning up those areas already.
That's a good question. That refers to what I said earlier, the beautification. I have a special love for Hamilton. I'll give you just a second to tell you what mine. I was born here, graduated from high school here, one way because there was no words. But I came back. I came back for a number of reasons. One is that I care about you as an individual, as a family. Some of the kindest people in the world are in this room, and I want the very best for you and for myself in these bobby, waning years. And so, I volunteered to work on your behalf as if we're a servant of yours. And so, my door is open, as if the door of each of these members up here. So we want to hear from you. That's why we had this meeting, so that you can have input and ask questions on things that will be answered to your satisfaction. Someone else?
But again, like Wathan, your question on abandoned houses, the planning commission is just going to be dealing with the future. We won't be dealing with anything that's here now. You know, like I was talking about, everything will get grandfathered in, these abandoned buildings will get grandfathered in. That scene about doing something is going to fall, like I said, Mayor said under another ordinance. It really won't have anything to do with the planning commission. Anything new coming in will matter.
Does that include building a house on your own property?
Yes.
So you have to get a building permit?
Yes.
Well, that's the situation now. That's not what we're talking about tonight. That's in, in force now. And so, that's where you would be at, with a building permit.
And who do you go for the building permit?
City Hall.
City Hall?
Yes.
Do they come out and check it? Is that how that works?
We do. That falls under the building, coming up to me.
Yes. Does that mean already they have ordinance in place? And so, many things from the road?
Now, that's falling, now that's falling under the zoning. The building itself is under the building code. Where it can be built is big sleep all along the leaves.
I can't afford to decide to put anything up. You'd better approach the property people to ask for them to come out and take a look at it.
That's true.
You better have water, you've got that setting, you've got electric. You better also prove that you have a licensed builder or a senior to itself.
The plans...
The plans have to be approved by who?
Well, by you and Hamilton.
And your building. Yes, naturally. I live in the city, that's why I'm asking. And I live here, and I think there's no other place more to handle it than Alabama. I agree with the way you're right here. And that's something from a city of 11 million people.
Thank you for that. Someone else? We're moving rapidly now because our time is, please, I don't want to give time for the other ordinance. Any other questions? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. Appreciate the work that y'all done on this zoning ordinance. And I encourage people, if you think of something, I can get home, please call us or email us.
Email me your office.
So that we can hear from you. We'll now discuss proposed alcohol. Where is Tina? This is an ordinance that is working progress. We hope to hear some good comments, questions, or suggestions on how we may improve it tonight. With that said, I'm going to let Tina introduce the staff of the committee.
Tina, Tina Fales, a police chief here in Hamilton. I'd like to introduce some of the ABC, the board members, and attorney. To my left here is Mr. John May. He's the RVP, responsible, Jimmy May, I'm sorry, Jimmy May. And then we've got Sergeant Donnie Winters. He's from the Florence District. And Sergeant Jonathan Winters, the Huskiesa District. And attorney, Robert... And Attorney Robert Hill with, uh, Central Office, Attorney for ABC.
Start off, turn it over, can you, can you start? Yes, I'll go down. Okay. You wanna hear me? God, can you hear me back there? Okay. Um, as most of y'all know, the city council has been presenting with the petition, uh, asking that we have a referendum on the left drone petition. And prior to, uh, that election, the city council would like to, uh, discuss some ideas on ways that the city can, uh, regulate the sale of alcohol in case it does, uh, pass. Um, obviously, if it doesn't, this is all moot. But the thing is, if the city council, uh, wants to enact is to make sure that we have proper sale of it to provide for as much of the safety, uh, health and general welfare of the community and have reasonable standards and regulations and control over the issue so that we don't just become a wild west town. Uh, I don't know if any of y'all have a copy of this proposed ordinance that we have drafted up. And again, as the mayor said, this is just a proposal. It basically throws out some ideas, um, and it's gonna need to be tweaked. There's gonna be some more specificity required in here. But this is sort of gives a basic idea about some of the thoughts, uh, that the council is looking at. Um, a few of the things that are done in here is the restriction of who may or may not sell and where they may or may not, uh, sell alcohol. There are a few classes, uh, for instance, a restaurant class one, uh, and a restaurant class two, uh, are defined. And specialty stores and retail liquor stores as well. We try to limit the sale of alcohol, uh, in what we term as B1 and B2 zones. And on the zoning amount, that's the basic general downtown business district and the highway business district. You can go in the room just adjacent to the mayor's office that has the city map. This area is basically the downtown area and the commercial area that runs along Military Street. I don't think that would be a major shock to anyone about what the commercial district in, uh, Hamilton is. But the sale of alcohol here would be limited to restaurants, uh, convenience stores, grocery stores, those type of businesses. Uh, no club, uh, would be allowed in any residential zone. And obviously, that would also fall under the zoning ordinance as far as what kind of businesses or things can operate in a zoning area. Um, the, one of the restrictions that the council has in this proposal is 500 feet from any, uh, church, school or child development facility. That would be something like a daycare center for even, you know, there are many people that have daycare centers in their home. If they're licensed by, uh, Department of Human Resources, that would be, uh, qualified as well. For retail liquor stores, uh, or liquor, liquor businesses where you can either purchase liquor for on-site consumption or off-site consumption, uh, we limit those to not being within a thousand feet, uh, those particular businesses or churches. Obviously, there are things in here about prohibiting the sale of minors. Uh, another thing is the authorized hours for which, uh, alcohol may be sold. And the proposed proposal here restricts it between 12 and 8, 12 a.m. and 8 a.m. Uh, so basically, any sales would have to end at midnight. Obviously, I know that there's been some talk about, you know, well, we're gonna have, you know, the honky-tonks and strip clubs, those kind of things that prohibit, uh, the regulation or prohibit any kind of, uh, weird behavior, but they're being straightforward. Other things in here are just the fees that are set up for the various businesses. Uh, one of the ideas is, is we can't prohibit, um, any of the classes that ABC board, these guys are much more knowledgeable about that. But there are several classes for which they give out licenses to, uh, sell alcohol. And we cannot say, well, no, you cannot have like a club one or no, uh, you can't have a club two or you cannot have a lounge. But what we can do is regulate, um, put in certain requirements before any of those are enacted. And so the council tries to do that to ensure that if something like that does go into place, it's a proper establishment, um, and not, uh, just an alcohol fed organization. Uh, but those are just some of the basic concepts, uh, that the council has to look at and the ability to regulate. Again, these gentlemen up here are far more knowledgeable about some of the specifics about who can apply for the licenses and some of those requirements. And I know that they're willing to answer any of your questions, but, uh, if y'all have any questions, if you wish to.
I have a question for you. Well, my question is for Scott, so I might get crowded. On page eight, number one, if you agree number one, then I have a question about that.
This is falls under, uh, section one, that's for location of premises near church or school. And there's, uh, under here, paragraph C, which is on page seven. In addition to all other regulations and restrictions and subject to substance contained in this section, no facility or property shall be authorized for the sale on premises consumption or for the sale of off-premises consumption of alcoholic beverages where the facility or property is less than 500 feet from any church, public or private elementary, intermediate, middle or junior high, high school or child development facility. A four-set distance restriction in this subsection shall not apply in the following enumerated cases. Number one is this, where if I, the facility or property is separated from the church, school or child development facility by a street or highway having four or more traffic lanes, not including any lanes that are turning lanes, service lanes and/or hazard lanes. Two, at least four of the traffic lanes that separate the licensed premises from the church, school or child development facility extend continuously and together for more than one mile before any one of these lanes terminates over kinds of turning lane, service lane and/or hazard lane. And the third component of that is the minimum of the distance between the licensed premises and the church, school or child development facility building is at least 200 feet.
Okay. Oh, the lanes have to go together for one mile. Is that one direction or both directions from the building, from the restaurant? Or all four directions from the restaurant?
That's, uh, excellent question. Um, and maybe these guys may have dealt with that particular issue a little bit more. But I think the idea is to make sure that it's four lanes from that, uh, from that point.
In all four directions.
Um, then that would sort of make it a two-mile, two-mile, uh, kind of thing. I would think it's just, I, my understanding here, and please tell me if I'm wrong, is the idea is you wanna make sure it's a four-lane, four-lane road and it's not just a temporary thing. Uh, but do y'all have any specific?
The state road does not have any just for, uh, business components. So we, you know, have not seen anything like this particular thing against the, uh, since it is a, a city ordinance. It could be something perhaps that would be clarified about the city ordinance.
And that would be something. That would be something to look at, uh, you know, this is just a proposal, I mean.
We can't, we can't hear, we can't hear a word of it. Knock it out.
Um, and that, that would be something we probably have to further define as, as where, where it begins and where it ends. You know, is it just in one direction or two directions, three directions or four directions? The idea presented is to make sure that, the idea is to make sure that it's an actual four, four-lane road. For instance, example would be the Methodist Church in what was the Guthrie's, you know, if that Guthrie's, um, presented a proposal to be licensed here. Question we have is, is there, it's a four-lane road there?
But it's not four lanes in either direction of one mile, north or, no, east or west, there is not one mile of four lanes from the fort of Guthrie's.
Is it not?
No, it's not. It's nine tenths if you're coming from the, uh.
West.
No, if you're coming from east, it's nine tenths.
Okay.
If you're going west, it's eight tenths.
So that would be an obvious point that we have to consider. Obviously, there, it wouldn't matter without the municipal community, it's within 200 feet from the church anyway.
But it's separated by four lanes of traffic, so that makes it the exception.
Yeah, but then it says, uh, number three, it's, uh, it's definitely 200 feet. It just knocks away the 500 feet. It knocks down 200 feet. But the, the point that Tina, Tina was making was about the one mile, and that's something that we, that's something that we just have to look at and try to define a little more specific. I'm not for sure how many areas and segments that would actually qualify for, but obviously, there's probably a few, uh, like I said, this is gonna be just under a mile there, so it's not gonna have to be.
We, as, as Mr. Hill said, State of Alabama has no such ordinance ruling regarding that, but I think, to answer her question, to answer her question, I think it's pretty much a moot point. Because what you're using that, uh, road for is to actually measure, uh, from one point of a building to another point of building, say like the Guthrie's to the church, to make sure that it meets within the requirements that the council has put forward, which is going to be the four-lane highway minus the turn lane plus 200-foot addition. And, you know, whether, whether the four-lane runs a mile on the underway or a mile on back this way, it's not really gonna matter. All, what you're going to do is just look at whether this is going to be a permanent four-lane road at that point for measurement purposes.
Next question. Come in. You would come up front, please.
Question I have is, if this ordinance, if, if this ordinance goes in, you know, and it's adopted, what if the council for six months from now decides, does Honky Tonk come in, if somebody will come in? You know, if, if not according to this ordinance, if three people change that in the council by calling the council meeting, are we as a people have to vote on that again?
Are you asking that if someone comes in and they wanna put established in and they do not meet the requirements of this?
Yes.
Um, what, what would happen? Obviously, the council can come back in and, um, deal away with this ordinance, change this ordinance, uh, break the grand variances. I would not recommend breaking variances in which the ordinance is, is established for many reasons, but obviously, it's not a stone, you know, like I said, I mentioned about the zoning ordinance, it's re-changed.
It did be changed, it took a vote from the people, but sort of like, uh, the law would just change like that in three votes, three votes. If three of the council were part, they could change this, whatever they wanted to, if they voted on it.
Well, just the same way as the council adopts this ordinance, they can change this ordinance. That's correct.
Without a vote from the people.
Without a vote from the people.
In other words, you're saying three councilmen can change that.
Majority of the councilmen, that's correct.
Another question. Suggestion.
I, I got a question. My question is, uh, like one can of beer to be sold in Hamilton, actually, how many dollars or how many cents would Hamilton get to keep of that money?
A can of beer would be like any other product, I mean, whoever sells it, uh.
Excuse me, it's, it's a tax, I believe, I know about it, because city of Hamilton, they get, how much actual tax would Hamilton get to keep out of a dollar and fifty-seven cent can of beer? How much tax would Hamilton get to keep out of it?
On a can of beer, number one, there would be the sales tax, obviously, whatever Hamilton's sales tax is, I don't know.
Nine percent.
And then, um, for the rest of it, there would be, if there is a tax on the beer, that is, depends on the size of the can, 1.6, 2.5 cents per four ounces apart thereof, I believe is the way to word it, uh, whatever that comes to, I don't know. Depends on the size of the, of the can.
Okay, let me ask you this, White.
Question other than that.
Would there be more tax collected off of, per dollar of the can of beer or a bottle of Coke for city flights?
Yes. I'm not aware of a special tax on, on Coke that, that would be, if there is a tax on a can of beer.
Okay, let me ask you this. How much is a can of beer or a six-pack? Do you know that?
A Coke?
Yes.
Beer from place to place.
Well, give us the ones that are close to your mind. What I know is, how much, how much will Hamilton, what kind of money will Hamilton reap off of selling alcohol? I'm just, you know, just trying to find out. I have a question asked almost every day.
Which is a much broader question than, than a can of beer. And I can answer that. Our accounting people, uh, can probably give you an idea maybe with what they track as to how much a comparable size city gets. Uh, I, I don't know, I mean, personally, I, I have, I don't have the knowledge.
We're going into this for blind, it's like, for real. Uh, we, we gotta know how much it's gonna be making off of it. I mean, we might not be able to, pay the cops to control this, we don't know what we're making. I mean, I might have gotten others.
When they ran, went wet and, and I may not have exactly measured 100%, but it seems to me like the first six months, when they went west, they gained a little over $200,000 in cash recently. Now, that's in the CFA realm, you know, every city's different. And you're deciding more or less, so it could be more, could be less.
And Wathe, you're gonna have, you're gonna have to broaden out your view also. Your, your question is specifically on a sales tax generated by that can.
That's right.
Now, what you're gonna have to look at, not only is there gonna be a sales tax generated by that can, there's gonna be the city license, and there's also gonna be the money that comes from the ABC license. So you're gonna have a larger perspective to look at than just the sales tax.
You've got money coming from two or three different sources from that actual one can of beer. And revenue, the revenue department of the State of Alabama, uh, takes care of, we, we don't do the taxes. we, we don't do the taxes, we're a force and we're licensed, we, we don't do the taxes. The state revenue department does, and there will be, you know, there's several, uh, points of taxes that become all that.
Okay, what will, what will a license cost, uh, a convenience store operator? What will a license cost there?
Depends on what he works.
For a beer license in Walker County in Jasper, for the state fee, it's one hundred dollars. Now, that's a fifty dollar filing fee issued, they take the application, you use license each, each year, that one hundred dollars is repaid. Now, on top of that, the city of Jasper has their own ordinance system just like this, where they set the amount that they charge per license for, and, and like you said, each one is different, your restaurant license is different than your, your convenience store, your five oh seven oh, your oh four oh six, and your own off premises are going to be different than your oh five oh seven oh. It all depends on what you want, what the city determines is that they're going to charge, and most, most places, off premises higher than off premises, and private clubs are even higher than that. The Shelby County doubles the state fee for a private club.
Some do more.
Yes, some do more. So that's all going to have to be hammered out by the city council of what they're going to charge.
Well, we haven't decided on those figures exactly, that's really how these people up here have, going to pay the fees, but if I understood, if our winner's right, we're probably going to add a tax on top of the twenty nine cent.
How is that a tax? Not a tax on top of...
The regular sales tax.
And their grocery cents tax.
The way, the way this proposed ordinance, which I believe came from a small community up in North Alabama, is it's a three hundred dollar filing fee to get the business license in for the convenience stores, it will be fifty percent of whatever the state license may get on a annual basis.
You can take, if I may ask, the city council, in there talking of us, some of these businesses may come in and get a license and file for it and operate maybe two or three weeks, or they may operate and not pay. They are, they're, they're trying to incorporate into their ordinance, number one, to protect the citizens, a bond for, that if anybody has issued a business license to sell alcohol in Hamilton, in, in city of Hamilton, that they have to have a surety bond, uh, to where that if they're, if they go out of business or don't pay, then that surety bond takes care of any license or any taxes that they don't, uh, give to the city. They forfeit that bond, and that protects you in, in regard to your license, that you should, would, should or would get.
Jefferson County has instituted one, it's either twenty five or fifty thousand dollars, that you have to have bond before they'll even talk to you, to stop a lot of problems.
And it does, and, and you will have, you will have people come in, and, and they may operate six months and they may just be gone, and, and they may, you may, standing there at the city, maybe, you know, holding a large tax burden. This bond that they're talking about incorporating into their ordinances is going to provide that the city gets the money that's due, uh, them, you know, if they're working on.
And on top of that, there's liquor liability insurance that the, the business has to possess. We require through the state a hundred thousand dollars of coverage for each, each licensed establishment. Most of the ones that I deal with now are anywhere from a billion to two million. That's the coverage for any incidents that may occur in that store.
Basically, if, if your child or somebody gives, I, not child, but if, if you was to go and purchase alcohol there and leave and be in some type of accident or something, their liability insurance, you're going, you or whoever you ran over would be looking back to them, um, you know, to, to reimburse.
Next question. I got one. Come up front, sir.
I believe that you stated, uh, a city would have to sell the club license and lounge.
That's correct.
Okay, let me ask, uh, who sets the fees for the license for beer? Does the city set the fees for the license?
Right, what, it's a two step process. First of all, they would have, they have to give the alcohol license from the ABC board. We just, the city, uh, just sells the business license and the city sets those fees.
They can set any amount they want for a beer, this license.
All right, say city, yes, city can.
All right, I'm on this for a, I believe for a club, it was fifteen hundred for a license and then two thousand for a license. And same way, same way for a lounge, but, uh, I'd like to say, if I live on the west side of Hamilton, city of Hamilton, and plenty of room out there, and that's where these things is headed, and I'd like to see this license figure out is fifty thousand dollars.
I should point out that this, this is just proposed fee in here, it's not been set, and also the issue to that, that is fifteen percent of the gross proceeds, uh, that the business has made too, so it's actually a little bit more than fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars as well. Uh, but that's, that's a valid issue if that, if you, where you live actually falls within the, the zoning area, I think what you're talking about may actually fall outside of the zoning area that the city has designated for these type of clubs, so you may be safe on that, on that.
Well, it's in the city limits.
If, if I may ask, uh, I, I think some may have, I think some may have the wrong idea. What happens, the process of that says, is the person that wants a license for alcohol will come to us and we will take and fill out an application. That individual will take that application and bring it to the city council of Hamilton, Alabama. Hamilton, Alabama will look over that application, they may have, they may have the, uh, police department do a background check, we do background checks on everybody that applies. Uh, some of you own businesses now that sell tobacco, and under this new, uh, process that we have, you can well see that it is, is changed. We require, uh, ABI background checks, we require FBI background checks. The city may want to do more than that, or they may want to accept ours, but they still look at that application that, that that individual has brought to them, and once they are satisfied that that applicant is entitled to a license, then they write a letter addressed to us and send it to us telling us that they approved that license, and then and only then will we issue that license, once it's approved here. Uh, we, if, if they call, if they tell us, I don't, you know, for whatever reason, uh, we won't issue it. Now that individual has a recourse that he can appeal it, and, and, you know, go through, you know, go through court or whatever to be able to seemingly get some license, but until the city approves it, we don't issue the license.
Another question.
Yes, my question is, once a person gets a license, what kind of recourse does the residents around the establishment have, um, if there's problems break out, or if they just find out that there's not a, a good marriage between the two? You know, what kind of recourse does people have in, in, you know, in the city when things are getting out of hand with an establishment? Uh, is there anything written in, in your bylaws or whatever to protect the residents around establishments like that? I mean, is, is there something in there, or just we have to just deal with what we get? And I think five hundred ten is good to close.
These guys can talk a little bit more about the enforcement, but if, if you have those kind of complaints, obviously make those complaints to the council and or the police department to be investigated, and we have in here, if they violate the terms of the ordinance, obviously they can have their license pulled by these guys and by the city as well, if they're not doing, you know, if they're not acting the way they're supposed to.
The zoning ordinance should take the alcohol.
Right, there's a zoning in the alcohol, that's, that's going to take care of those kind of issues if there are legitimate issues that come up, uh, you know, like if unfortunately you have one that's nearby where you live at and, you know, they're playing the loud music, they got people outside, you know, drinking, abording, having a big time, or they're selling to minors, those kind of things, then, you know, you make a complaint to the police, uh, ABC people, city council, we investigate, gauge that, you know, if it's, it's true, they can have their license pulled. Um, that's, that's, you know, it's some of these guys need at that point in time, to make sure that the ordinance is being followed.
Scott, that's really weed, passing the ordinance, or commence those type of status being in a residential area, first place.
Scott, what's the penalty right now for selling to a minor, to a establishment? What's the process there on, uh...
Well, actually, Mr., I, I'll let my field, I'll make a quick statement, let my field go back. We, we have access to doing a criminal charge on the individual that actually did sell to that minor, and, and the ABC board, besides the criminal charge, the ABC board can take and issue an administrative ticket, uh, to that individual, and as tickets are issued, the higher they get is more, I'm sorry. But, yeah, to answer your question, the amount is seven hundred and fifty dollar administrative fee on a ticket for first offense. Now, criminal ticket obviously is set by the judge, we, you know, uh, there are some guidelines they go by, but, uh, we, we actually issue two tickets to any sale to a minor to the location, uh, either tobacco or, uh, alcohol.
That may be in somewhat of an answer to the previous question, also just your information, ABC board has the authority to, uh, fine up to a thousand dollars to defend a license for up to a year and terminate a license. So those are penalties that, that can be imposed depending on the severity or the repetition of, of, whatever. We also have the licenses are issued, uh, they are annual licenses, so there is a time each year before the license is issued that we are open to objections to renewing the license, uh, if, and that frequently would be the problems that have, have developed, uh, we would have a hearing and, uh, uh, instead of whether or not to reissue the license. These are things that we do try to work with, with the citizens and, and with local authorities involved. Point was raised here, uh, what we are an administrative regulatory agency, we deal with the licensee and the license. Uh, the criminal side, for example, sale to a minor is a misdemeanor. Uh, the criminal side would go through court and it would be up to the judge at that point, the district judge, as to what penalty would be, it could be a fine, it could be a fine in jail, um, whatever the judge decides, there's certain parameters there, but, uh, there are, there's potentially, uh, the criminal side in some of the things, citations for criminal offense, and then a broader range, uh, including those, but a broader range for, uh, administrative citations.
How about a DUI if somebody was applying for a license, but ten, fifteen years ago they had a DUI, would he be refused?
That would not automatically prohibit him under state law.
No?
A DUI would not automatically prohibit someone...
You could still get a license to tell them.
Yeah, everything is considered, but there's not automatic prohibition. And was there a question?
I just wanted to know, what's the procedure? Do we go to the city, just go to the city? I mean, I'm jumping the gun in saying this, but, I mean, for ordinance for ordinance, I mean, what, what do you do? Do you go to the city council? With the problems with the establishment, or how it handles that?
A problem? If, if I may ask you part of that, um, we on a regular basis, and when I say really I'm talking about the ABC board, we on a regular basis, we employ minors that work for us, strictly for us. Uh, these are kids, depending on whether they're purchasing tobacco or whether they're purchasing alcohol, are from fourteen to nineteen years old. We use them in a certain range and they are approved out of Montgomery. We don't, uh, employ somebody that looks like he's twenty five years old and he's nineteen, but we make sure that they look the part. We do send these people in, uh, to these locations, uh, and randomly, just to see if they can take and make a purchase. The city of Hamilton, if they so desire, can set up the same program as for us, the city. If, now, where, when the city cannot issue an administrative ticket, we can. If they do a criminal charge on a location, on a premise, all they've got to do is notify us, and besides that criminal ticket that they have issued that location, then we come back and, uh, based on their paperwork, we issue an administrative ticket. That, the administrative ticket does not go through the court, it goes through our process, uh, through Montgomery. They've got two or three options to do, but if you have a complaint, first thing you need is you either call us as the ABC board, or you call Hamilton Police Department and make the complaint to them. Hamilton will forward a copy of your complaint home to us if you go to them. If we get the complaint, then we're going to call Hamilton and say, hey, look, this is what we just got, we need to look at this, and that's how it starts.
I should say, um, to, before it gets to the point that you're talking about, and we talked about it a little bit, there are three ways the council has tentatively set up in this ordinance to try to prevent that circumstance from happening. One is the zoning, by saying, uh, if you want a club or lounge, fine, you can only go to these certain areas, hopefully that'll prevent the issue that, uh, this gentleman discussed about it going right next to his home, uh, and it's the same problem that you had. Two is the fees that are required to open up such an establishment, uh, it's going to be prohibitive for just anybody to just come in and throw one up real quick. And the third one is, uh, there's a variety in here, a committee set up with the council to appoint, that would go out, you know, say I've made an application to put in a lounge, they would come out, they'd investigate my plans, they'd investigate me, they'd bring this to the council, plus the council would have a hearing to allow, you'd have to give notice to all the neighboring landowners, uh, that, you know, this kind of establishment is going, proposing to go here, and so you'd have the opportunity at the forefront to come to the council and express those concerns to the council even before, you know, the club lounge or whatever is going on in place. So you'd have that, that in place, you know, right at the top. So you've got those three restrictions in the beginning, and hopefully that will limit quite a bit of having to come in on the back end and do that, but we understand that, you know, that's going to be, you know, an issue as well, and that's just the way, the way it is, but, um, and so hopefully with this ordinance, we're trying to attack it from both the front end and the, and the back end as well.
You just, you just answered the first part of the question, but you go back to control. Once everything is, uh, and probably you can answer this. Once everything is, and probably you can answer this, once it goes back to, everything has worked out, I mean, the gentleman or the lady or whoever gets the license, and everything's approved, and everybody's had a chance to complain or say what they want to, and the license been approved under state. Then you have no recourse but to give that license. You've got to give it. So, you, the city council does not really have control of who, who's out there and who don't.
They, they have.
I know they do.
They have their.
But what I'm saying is, the local council does not have the control, once everything is approved. By all.
We will not issue the license, we have approval of the city council. We have.
Well, I'm talking about everything approved in there.
If the city.
I mean, you can't, you can't just not give a license because you don't like it.
Correct.
Absolutely. But there are, but again, cer- certain.
But what I'm saying is, if everything approved, and, and, you know, if you give this person a license, you don't give that one, or you under a license, you're going to get in trouble. Everybody knows that.
Well, it depends on what you're talking about here.
I'm talking about everybody that's on the up and up.
Well, if you're, if you're talking about this individual having a left lung.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about lounges and a club, whatever, everything's on the up and up. The local council, once it's approved, don't have any control over the shop.
The local council, it's part of the licensing process, the local council has the weight on approving or not approving the application, the application then goes.
Our policy on what's approved, everything's on the up and up?
Well, he, he could, for example, if there's an application that's not in the right zone or.
Well, that's one thing, everything's in the right zone?
I, I understand.
Everything's in the right zone, everything's on the up and up, you can't say no to a man.
Are you trying, are you trying to say, yeah, we're going to give it to him because we're licensed, but we're not?
No, 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 I'm not trying to say that. I'm not trying to say that, what I'm saying here, everything's on the up and up, everybody knows about the up and up here, everything's legal, everything's okay. You can't, you can't say no to a man.
Well, why would we not offer it to them?
Yeah.
Why would we not approve everything?
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking, but the city don't have control over state stuff.
Well, we can.
The state will have control.
The state, of course, before the grant of the license. I'm probably not following.
No, I don't know.
Well, I know you're, but I'm telling you, the city and the state, if it's a state license, it's that.
Why is everything approved?
Okay, there, there's, there's something that's going to be added in what you're saying. Joey may as well, if the city chooses to make mandatory in their ordinances that each business be an RVP member.
You don't understand my question?
No, sir, I, I'm not, I have to ask you, if that meets all set requirements.
Yep.
Then the city council has no.
No, we go.
Except for to issue a license, which I understand, why would you not, if he meets all of them?
Well, that's what you're saying, if he meets all of them. They got the issue, so you get.
We got to say yes. That's why the process is there, we have to make sure that they do meet the requirements.
But when it boils right down to it, the nitty gritty, y'all have got the trouble. That's just the way it is.
No, if the city says no, it's no. If the city says no, it's no. It's no. You can't buy that city to get a license. They don't want to buy that.
When the city say, if I say, you don't want to buy that.
Everybody does their own checking.
Well, if they cannot operate, even if they have an ABC license, without a city business license, if they have, if they don't have a business license, they don't operate.
Well, the city has.
Where are you going to burn them down?
Serving.
Where are you going to burn them down?
Why are you burning them down?
Definitely.
I don't know. Where are you burning them up and up?
I can tell you where they're up and up.
Oh, what I'm saying is, you know, if the lounge is out there.
If it's not in within that common area, they're not going to get it done again.
It's not dependent. I'm trying to get across, you going to put it out there, or you going to put it over here? We're, we're almost out of time, I'll make a couple more questions.
I got one more question. How close, is there any law or ordinance stating how close businesses at the same time can operate?
Not, there's not a statement.
Well, is there, is there a city, a city law?
Liquor stores within, on the same block?
Right, next door in the same block or something, is there anything like that?
In this, in this proposal, in, in this proposal, there's for liquor stores, there's a thousand feet setback, and we can't have two within a thousand feet, but that's, that's all that's in here, that's just a proposal.
Quick, quick question, on the zoning map, what districts on that zoning map will they be able to have establishments in?
B one.
B, yeah.
B, B one and B two. And B two.
Mine is not a question, one of the things that we've talked about, Scott, we talked about this afternoon, was in order to discourage lounges and nightclubs and that sort of thing, that we would not consider desirous for a town like Hamilton, Alabama. We could set the fees, I think it's fifteen hundred dollars a round, we could go back and set that to ten thousand dollars, and I understand, we could make some rules that it would have to be a certain size of building, it would have to have a sprinkling system, it would have so many parking places, we could designate what is required before they can put that in, that would discourage a lot of that.
So then, would be a portable building with a lean-to shed on it?
Right.
And it'd be a home.
What's saying, what's saying you six people, you're off at work, they could change that all over again then?
Yes. Pardon me? I believe so. We'll ask the attorney.
Just a comment, I know the date for the election has not been set, or I don't think it's been set. My suggestion is that we set it far enough in advance so that we can address, something like Walter was asking earlier about how much revenue the city would be getting, so the city would have at least that kind of information to help make a decision as well.
Okay.
Do you want to just speak?
I have another question on that, because we expect probably what Annette said to be in writing before, as this thing goes along, you know, and I think people would like that much better, if it was in writing into ordinance, that these licenses for these nightclubs could be those large, large amounts, could that might be reachier than that?
Yes, that'd be in there, Walter.
It will be in there?
Yes.
Don't let you think it to be, Mayor. We haven't determined that yet, but it's going to be probably.
Mr. W, what's in this proposal is usually somewhere between fifteen hundred and twenty-five hundred, plus fifteen percent of the gross proceeds each month. That's just sort of what's proposed, and that's what's written in here. Obviously, they can jack those rates up, jack them down, whatever they want, but, but that's sort of the ballpark, go play.
The city of Hamilton, I understand, this has to be done by city ordinance, it can't be done by, by state. We have strict rules, we have to go back, and they're already there. As the city council sets up their ordinances, they can be way more restrictive than what we can, and they can, actually, they can probably be as restrictive as they want, within certain limits.
Let, let me add some real quick, some introduction, but in Port Payne and ARAM, a couple of the cities I've dealt with, for example, they didn't want a lot of liquor stores, they didn't want to be Henley, I always use them as my ticket store, so to speak, but they didn't want to be in Henley, so they said, we want a charge, five thousand dollars for a liquor store license, and a fifteen percent tax on gross receipts. In ARAM, a gentleman opened up a liquor store, and he cites contest that, and before they were proceeding with the contest, the judge said, well, I need to look at books, and say, it says fifteen, that's not a fee, but a tax, we're going to bargain it. He said, I need to see your book, to see if there's fifteen percent tax, if it's industrial business, that is his claim. He said, you're not going to look at books? And the judge says, well, if I can't look at books, then you can't, you know, judge, there's a problem that this is industrial business, and he didn't open books, so the gentleman away, so they're still paying five thousand dollars for a liquor store license and fifteen percent tax on gross receipts, and that marks a lot of.
Can also, if we have it, and do an inspection under our authority or with us, based on that same thing, and if they, if they want to inspect it, then, then it can be inspected, if you look at it.
I believe the city can do that, outside of at least your revenue collection system as well, under the business license, can go in and check the book, ensure that the city can.
I just got one quick question, with elections that are on the edge path to a hamlet, would there be a time when a customer can go in, have lunch, and have a can of beer with it in one?
It could, yes.
If they get a proper license for that.
Just appropriate license, if you have a restaurant, and they apply, and it's strange, and, and the zone, the restaurant exists, and they have a restaurant license, restaurant license is allowed in there, they walk in, order a lunch, order a beer with them.
But that's going to concern my own premises, not to go.
Yeah, you can't walk out.
No, I understand. I had a restaurant.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
What you have to understand, when you sign an application for an Alabama ABC license, you sign consent for an inspection. Anytime that business is open, if there's somebody in it, it's open to walk in. That's just not us, that's the city officers, chairs department, anybody else can go in there, and they have the authority to do an inspection of the premises, where any place that alcohol might be, they have the authority to enforce the rules and regs, they have the authority through us, then they have authority to enforce the rules and regs that the city comes up with, and they have the authority to enforce state law. That's anytime, that's how we do a lot of our control is through inspections. Tuscaloosa, where I work, we do inspections just about every night, going through the licensed locations, whether it be restaurants, the bars, you know, anything of that nature, that's how we control it. They never know what we're working, they never know if we're going to be there.
I had a restaurant in this town twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Well, there is.
Just because you're open twenty-four seven, don't mean you can sell twenty-four.
Right, we've had that argument in other towns. As a matter of fact, Joey had a gentleman, he had a location open, he said, but I'm open twenty-four hours a day.
Right.
Well, you can't sell twenty-four hours, but he said, well, I'm open twenty-four, well, you can't. And we had a problem.
And also, that's state law, because city can, it's where, if they wish, that they stop sales anytime, Monday through, you know, Monday through Sunday, just like Jasper stops at two AM every night, regardless of weekend or whatever.
If you want to have Sunday sales in the city of Hamilton, then you must have a different and entirely separate referendum. If you want to have drought beer sales in the city of Hamilton, you've got to have a entirely separate and different referendum. You've got to have two or different votes in order to be able to have Sunday sales or to have drought beer.
Well, I don't have no.
No, no, sir, I'm not, I'm not directing to you, I'm just, you know, a lot of people is going to, you know, wondering, will they go, you know, be seeing somebody out there on the corner, on Sunday with a beer going to church.
But if that restaurant that's already established is close to a church, then that will wake them right up.
Oh, it's nothing you can do. You're, you're not in the right zone, you took up the church or the city. You know, that's.
What was the blue light cover?
Sorry?
The blue light signal?
Are you talking happy hour?
Yeah, that's what I'm wanting to do, is it happy hour or something?
That's one of the things.
I've never heard of that.
Blue light signal? Because state regulations prohibit it, you can't do anything to do so towards the green, and that, that's also.
Scott, I have one last question.
All right, this may be the last question.
The proposed ordinance that the city has, have they set aside a percentage of those taxes, what would be appropriate to the schools and toward education at this point? Is there a certain percentage?
It's not, this particular ordinance, it wouldn't be in this point, the council has talked about that, and I want to say a thirty percent number.
Thirty percent will go, will go to the school.
Taxes generated from alcohol sales.
That's correct.
Will go for a school.
Be thirty cents out of every dollar generated by alcohol sale will go to the school. Hamilton's school.
Yes.
Elementary, middle, and so forth.
Thank you.
And it will, we'll set up a separate account, but it will not be a blank check.
Yes.
The school official will have to come and present their proposal to the council, and it's not for bricks and mortars, we're looking at distant learning or dual enrollment, something that will help the quality of education for our students in Hamilton.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Will there be an ABC store here? That's, I'm sorry. ABC is, is set up in different, well, let's say zones, or different divisions. We have accounting, we have stores, we have enforcement, RVP used to be a division unto itself, it is now part of enforcement, and the stores, I, I can't tell you what the stores will do. Any whiskey that is bought, any liquor that's bought for sale, will be bought from a state wholesale store, and right now, I think the closest one that we've got is, there's one in Muscle Shoals, and there's one in Jasper, those are the two closest wholesale stores. I would assume, if, if several of the towns go west in this area, that stores would look at that, but that's something I can't answer.
I got a question. They were speaking a while ago about the council could change this, the way it's being sold at any time, but the majority of the council's voting on it, and one of the big questions I think most people would have about this, if they're going to vote on alcohol, they would like to know that what they're voting on would stay in place from now on, until another election was held in the people chamber. Can that be?
We will address that issue, Gene, when we finalize the, the ordinance, we will address that issue. And if that was brought up, then we will address that issue, and set everybody's mind and ease on that.
Something to consider also, in Lauderdale, in the city of Florence, the city of Florence was inside the city, or went inside Lauderdale campus, there was, what's the name, a few years ago, Joe, a little bit, ten or fifteen years ago, Main Street in Lauderdale, in Florence, going up toward the college, was absolute, just, it was bar after bar after bar, and they, they wanted that changed. The city council, and I'm not saying that would happen here, but the city council went in and passed ordinances, with the restrictions that they discussed here tonight, regarding amounts of money, parking lot, requirements, that type of. They couldn't do anything with the locations that were existing at that time, however, as they gradually either changed owners, did transfers, or went out of business, then that new business coming in had to take, you know, do with what the ordinances had been set, or they had to, they had to make a buy time. Now, they were, the old ones were grandfathered in, and I think there may be, what, two?
Three. In other words, what you're telling me is, it could be voted in, if that be the way it be until.
No, no, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that's a possibility, that that's probably what would happen, or in. would happen, or is that they would be grandfathered in. But here again, that's not, that wouldn't be something that I can say, that's what happened there.
It is like, a little politician can be elected in and out, new politicians can come in and change this, that's just the way politics work.
In other words, it couldn't be voted in, where it would have to stay the way it's voted in for the people, and that's the people voted out. That's my question.
On the ordinances?
Yes, yes, the ordinances, that the people vote on. They're not, they're voting on it for one way, the way it is set up now. And what's, I was asking all ago, can the next mayor and the next city council come in and change everything that the people voted on, without the vote of the people?
Actually, the council votes on the ordinance, the people do not vote on the ordinance. The people vote on the wet/dry issue. The council votes on the ordinance, they can change that like they can change any other ordinance. However, the people can come back in two years, the people can come back in two years and have another petitions, if, say, the council, the city goes wet, in two years, the people can come up with another petition and say, we want to have another vote, and we'd have another vote. And it could go dry, and then.
Right, that's what, that was the next question. If the people hadn't set aside what happened within two years, you could have another vote voted out. So they wouldn't be stuck with it.
Okay. That's the end of the meeting. Thank you all for coming, and thanks for your input.